Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Okay, I'm calling the public meeting of the Select Board of Walpole together at 6:34 PM on October 22nd, 2020. In the room are Peggy Pushear, Steve D'Alessio, and Cheryl Mayberry, who are all of the Select Board, Sarah Downing, who is the Manager of Administration, and Regina Borden, who is our Secretary. And Steve?
I make a motion to accept the accounts payable check register in the amount of $66,795.36 for checks issued 10/23/2020. This includes a payment of $22,335.69, payment to Granite State Minerals for a highway assault.
Second? Are there any questions or comments about this? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The accounts payable are approved.
I make a motion to accept the payroll register.
Granite State?
Granite State Minerals. I make a motion...
Oh, yes.
I make a motion to accept the payroll register totaling $29,802.60 for checks dated 10/23/2020, and the $941 payroll tax transfer of $6,017.18.
Second? Are there any questions or comments about payroll? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Payroll is approved.
I make a motion to accept the Select Board minutes of October 15th, 2020.
Second? Are there any questions or comments about those minutes? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved.
I make a motion to accept the non-public minutes of the Select Board dated 10/15/2020, and they shall remain sealed.
Second? Are there any questions about those? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the non-public minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
They are approved, and they are sealed.
I make a motion to accept the staff meeting minutes of October 15th, 2020.
Second? Any questions or comments about those minutes? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
They are approved.
I acknowledge the receipt of the planning board minutes of October 13th, 2020, and the North Walpole Village Commissioners Meeting of October 13th, 2020.
So, no. Thank you, we acknowledged those minutes.
I make a motion to accept building permit 2020-43 to build a 63 by 40 foot house with a 36 by 30 garage at map 7, lot 20, sub lot 1. And this is a carryover from last week. We had some questions about the licensing of electrical contractor and plumbing contractor. They will do the work themselves and have the work reviewed by two licensed contractors.
Second? I know, we don't... Oh, yes, sorry, we didn't do that last week, did we? We know about...
Yep.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments about it?
It's not... If I can get a word document of the building permit process so I can update it. It needs to be fixed a little bit.
Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote to approve the building permit 2020-43.
I make a motion to...
Wait. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to accept building permit 2020-45 to build a 20 foot by 60 foot carport on map 8, lot 31.
Second? Are there any questions about it or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote to approve building permit 2020-45, map 8, lot 31. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is approved.
I make a motion to accept building permit 2020-46 to build a 20 foot by 8 foot shed on map 4, lot 3, sub lot 3.
Second? Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. They are approved. Okay. We are in old business. And the first item in old business is the letter which I drafted for all of you to review to Jim Finn. I don't understand, on our agenda, it says E-S-S-R?
Yeah, it's called the CARES SIR funding. Yeah. That's the full name.
E starts with an E's?
Yeah, E-S-S... Well, it's actually E-S-S-E-R.
Hmm, that's strange.
So, at least that's how it looks in the grant system for, I know, the education system.
Because I thought it was literally CARES, C-A-R-E-S. Okay, doesn't matter.
Yeah, yeah, it's all the same grant.
Okay.
Basically. But I think that sometimes it's in reference to whether it's like the Gopher funding and all that other stuff. But it's for... I know for me, it's the CARES SIR. So, but yeah, it's all the same thing. So, I move to approve our response to the CFO at Fall Mountain regarding CARES funding.
Second? Any questions or comments about it? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is approved, and we'll sign this letter. For the minutes, basically, the letter says that we are expending all of our... the money allocated to the town of Walpole, and we have no additional money to share. We have only one bid for, if you recall, it's been reported to us that the wheels on the cannon that are out on the common are rotting away, and we really only have one bid to repair those, and that is a bid for $3,895 from Walpole Woodworks, which is Adam Boes. So, I'll let you all look at that.
I make a motion to... Yeah, I make a motion to repair the cannon wheels for the amount of $3,895 to Walpole Woodworks.
Second? Are there any questions or comments about it?
This money will come out of the memorial...
Right, we're going to have memorial funding.
More...
And that isn't... It's a quote. He said he might be a little over a little...
Yeah.
Sorry, that was my question, he said.
That wasn't exact. It was like...
He said the price will not exceed the estimated by more than 20% without prior approval.
And this is the American Legion?
Yep.
Yes.
So, if it exceeds it, and you motion for the use after now, does that mean that if we have to come back and approve the increase?
I think we should.
Okay.
You too.
No, I agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
Absolutely. Are there any...
Yes.
Did you second that motion, Cheryl?
I do second it.
Okay. Are there any other questions? If not?
Yes, there's an up to 20% difference, but with prior approval.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The bid is approved. And if it exceeds what this bid is, we will discuss it again. All right? Did you sign it anywhere?
No, there wasn't a stamp.
Oh, yeah, there's a stamp on it, I forgot.
I'm going to still put my name down here. I'll hand it back to you, and you can just put your name on it.
Yeah, that'd be great, thanks, sorry about that.
No problem.
Okay. Now, we have a new person in the audience tonight. Hi, Holly.
Hi, Howard.
Nice to see you here.
Nice to see you.
This is Holly Goudy. What would you like to talk to us about tonight, Holly?
I am a leader in the Pinnacle View 4-H Club here in Walpole, and we've had an interesting year, as you can imagine.
Yep.
Began having in-person meetings in September, trying to find fun activities to do with young people outside for right now while the weather is holding. In October, we carved pumpkins, and we replanted around the fountain and around the ant trees of this building. And while we were doing those things, we... the leaders were sort of commenting back and forth, trying to figure out, we have a December activity planned, what can we do in November that would be fun, that we could do outside if the weather helped? And I said something about scarecrows. Wouldn't it be fun to make scarecrows, let the kids design their own scarecrows? Well, what would we do with them who are standing by the fountain? And I said, you know, if they were to put here by the fountain with a sign that says, you know, join Global 4-H Club? And the consensus in that conversation was, that's a great idea. We did not think to ask permission until one day last week, but I was thinking about it, and so I communicated with Sarah, who said, well, I don't know about putting scarecrows around the fountain, and I understand that, and I was a little hesitant to do that. Her suggestion, which I'm hoping you'll entertain, would be for us to make some scarecrows and a poster, and have them around the gazebo. We'd like to do this on Sunday, the 25th, in the afternoon, and leave the scarecrows up for the week, sort of to celebrate Halloween the season, and then we will take it all down on the 1st of November, and keep cleaning up if there's a mess, and all of those kinds of things. But we thought we should ask the town before we just did that.
Appreciate your asking. Have you seen the scarecrows that are in North Walpole?
That was kind of my inspiration.
Right. They're terrific. They're terrific.
Yeah, and they did. I was down in Troy on Wednesday, and they're all over Troy, too.
The village school, I was looking at Facebook on my own page, probably eight or nine years ago, encouraged a scarecrow making contest here in Walpole, and they made a fabulous... the fifth graders made a fabulous one of Mr. Jacob's that was sitting on the front stoop of the elementary school. I have a picture of that.
That's great.
And so, that's kind of what we thought we would like to... I don't know how many scarecrows it will be, and I did want to ask you if there's, you know, anything we thought we shouldn't do. Should we not block the staircase when we put the scarecrows in? I know that that gazebo is under camera monitoring, so I...
No, I wouldn't block the stairway either, and I agree with you that I think I would go to the common and not around the fountain because of the traffic.
Right, right.
That would thoroughly confuse people.
And people won't be able to get a close look at them.
Right. I... That was, as Sarah made the suggestion, and she thought the fountain wasn't a great idea, which I understood. Was a little hesitant when I thought about it because of the traffic issues, and when her suggestion of the gazebo came through in an email, I was like, that's a really good idea. And then, we can build them right here and have a safe place for the kids to work while they're doing it, and not have a good time. As I said, we're trying to find activities...
It's a great idea.
...for these kids to do.
Absolutely.
Because they have had, like, no fun at all.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
One of the things that occurs to me, having heard the weather forecast for next week, there's a potential for rain almost every day.
Yeah.
So, you may want to put a couple of them undercover on the gazebo.
Yeah. Well, that's certainly enough space that we should... all of us should be able to make some kind of a scarecrow.
Sounds great.
So, I just wanted to make sure that was okay with you guys.
Absolutely.
It is.
Thank you for coming.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
Have a good evening.
Yeah.
I'm going to go back now to under old business. How about dam repairs? Do you want to talk about that?
I didn't get anything from custom real, and I judged that it was supposed to be due today.
Oh, I did. I got a big, long email from them.
I didn't get anything, so...
Okay, well, you will, because it's several pages long.
Maybe it's in the...
And that gives us a price, a breakdown of price. It comes up to $419,820.
It doesn't look like a shot effect, so send it on to us for...
Yeah, I'll send it on to you, or I'll copy it for you tonight.
Yeah, I'll get a copy. Yeah, if you copy it, that'd be great.
I may not be able to copy the drawings because my computer didn't handle that very well.
Yeah, I'll ask him where... what happens if it copies.
Right, because it came in sort of this morning, actually.
Yeah.
I didn't see anything. I didn't see anything either.
Okay, well, it's quite detailed, so...
Yeah, it's supposed to be.
Yeah, and add a comment on the fact that it is in fact due today.
Yeah.
So that you... In fact, it says so that you can start discussing it tonight. So, we'll put that off until next week then, all right?
Yeah.
Do you want to discuss the sewer bond fee?
Yes.
Okay.
Your honor, it passed out, and I gave everybody a copy of the sewer bond fee. We had talked about changing from a flat $90 a quarter to basing it on units of water. So, I took five data points, Q1 through Q4 2019, and Q1 2020. Took in about $263,000 in bond money during that period of time. And when you divide it out, it comes up to an average of .088 cents per unit of water. I'm suggesting we go to 11 cents per unit of water. It'll give us a little bit more revenue, and that excess revenue, I'd like to put away in a P-DIP account to cover future bond issues that should come up with the sewer. And it also dropped the minimum water and sewer users bond payment would drop from about $90 a quarter to $55 a quarter. So, it will spread the cost to higher users of water, and those with less use of water will pay less, as instead of a flat rate, of course, everybody's billed.
Questions? Comments? This would go into effect if we approve it on the first quarter of 2021, correct?
So, it wouldn't be in their bills until February, they'd see a difference in their bill.
Right. And it's based on units of water that people use.
Right.
Well, I'm just getting this, so I'm just looking at it. I answered my own question here. So, I think it looks reasonable. It seems rational. I'm just looking at the bond dollars versus units of water, so I think it's the lowest. So, the lowest was 1/4 2019. So, we have 27,000 units more this year. No, I think 11 seems like a good... 11... 11 cents is what I'm hearing, right? 11 cents per unit?
Yeah. And that would give us a little bit of buffer that we can put away for the...
Right, right, because we're already up... Right, we're almost at 10 now.
Yeah.
Yep. I think this looks reasonable, and even at the... even at the high point, yeah, I think it's good. It makes sense to me.
Yeah.
And I think the P-DIP suggestion makes a great deal of sense, because we will have future bond payments. There's no doubt about that.
Is the... But is this the last... How many more... How many different bonds? Is this the last?
No, we got... There's still, I think, three or four bonds on there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's going to be at least another 20 years before the bonds... all the bonds go away.
Okay.
So, but I'm just suggesting if we build up some excess payment now, if something else goes wrong over there that we have to pay another bond on, at least we have some money to go into it with.
Yep.
And we don't have to, you know, go right...
And it's not a huge, you know, cost per unit of water, even at our high point, it's only like a penny.
Yeah.
So, I think that's completely reasonable.
Yeah, it kind of balances out. What we will see is, you know, the users... the lower users will benefit, and the higher users will pay more. I think it's easier to explain to the higher users why they're paying more, as opposed to trying to explain it to the lower users, why they're not getting a break.
And it will, in fact, catch everyone who's using water, and not have someone who's got, let's say, five apartments in a building paying only one bond payment. It will be...
Correct.
Each person will have to be metered for the water usage, which makes it fairer all across the town.
I agree.
So, anyway, that's where we are with that. I don't know how we made out today. I hope we worked, but the Grant Committee was meeting today.
Oh, good.
The decision makers will be meeting today, so I'll check tomorrow and see if I can find anything yet.
Do you want to motion to adopt this, that you...
Yeah.
I would like to wait one more week.
All right.
I want to get this over to Mark for review as well.
All right.
And he hasn't gotten a chance to review.
Well, you can tell him that we are feeling positive about it.
In favor.
That we support it.
Yep. I just want to have another... And we should have a little bit more for another data point, too.
So, are we going to reevaluate this cost structure as the... I assume yearly, maybe, just to make sure we're...
Yeah, we gotta... Yeah, we should be meeting at least once a year as utilities, anyway.
Yeah.
And what I'm going to propose is that we tie that into our annual budget meeting.
Yeah, that's good. It makes sense to do that.
Do it at the same time, and we'll just, you know, adjourn as one and open it as utilities, and have a review of where we are in the projects and so forth.
I'd also like to see if available the sort of bond timeline for Bell's Falls.
Yeah, we can get that.
So, we can anticipate...
Yeah.
You know?
I can get that. I think I already have it.
Okay.
From a year or so back.
Okay.
I'll ask them to update it.
The other thing that is still pending is the town streetlights. Now, Steve Granier sent us some information. Did he not? Did you not get it?
I got it.
It'll be on next week's agenda then, for the town streetlights. I will forward his email. I didn't notice that he didn't include you. He had some facts and figures for us.
Yep.
So, we'll put it on the agenda for next week, all right? As we will also click on the reservoir dam repairs, correct?
Yes, please.
All right, those will both be...
So, I'll also invite... We also should send a copy to John Heska, and certainly Mark.
Yes, that's a good idea, so that they can come in and talk to this.
At the same time, I've been asked... I asked Rich to figure out all the costs associated with the reservoir dam to date, and I got a number from, which I think is low, so I don't think he went back far enough.
How many years did you ask him to go back? Where you been?
Well, I think he only looked at the current purchase order. I don't think he looked at the previous purchase orders.
Well, there've been several.
Yeah, so we're trying to get it all together.
Some of them may be under conservation.
Yeah, I have to give him a call and work through some of the detail.
I'm looking to see where Steve's...
Yeah, I saw Steve the years.
I did, too. I read it, and I forgot to mention it to Sarah. Here it is. He did send this last Friday. He sent it to Rich, but not Sarah. I will forward it to you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Oh, there it is. Turned up.
Which one?
The custom real.
Oh, good. Okay.
Just turned up.
All right, well, I got it.
Yeah, this one.
This morning.
Just showed up tonight. Okay, I can pull this out tonight.
Okay.
And for...
All right. Yeah, I got it at 10 o'clock this morning.
Yeah, if we... Yeah, and we could look at this. So, what is the magnitude of the frost? Doesn't sound good, does it?
I... No, I still don't see the... You don't see it? Well, we'll see that it gets forwarded to you then. Why don't I do that right now?
John Heska has it, and Mark has it. Yeah. You are on distribution charge.
I'm not? Okay. I'm going to stop looking then.
Yeah.
Shall we send it to you? Yes, please. You may get it twice if Rich... And if Steve has sent it to you as well. And I'm sending it to Sarah.
Let's go with the gazebo.
Okay. Is there anything else under old business that should come up tonight? If not, then let's go to new business, please, and we've met with Holly. So, Sarah, you had a proposal you wish to make.
Well, again, because it's been kind of a quiet Halloween for being able to do anything, I was thinking, once Holly brought up the scarecrow idea, maybe we could have a landscape LED light on the town hall with some not-too-scary little cutouts, you know, pumpkins and cats and little white ghosts floating around.
A light show.
A little light show, so it kind of gives a little bit more eerie feeling downtown, but not too scary for the little kids.
Oh, I saw the... I saw the light projections. Yeah, I've seen it.
Okay.
Yeah, they're pretty harmless, but they're still in the spirit of Halloween, so I think they look great.
I'll look. I know Speed had...
My only comment to it, not against it, but my only comment, it does freak out dogs.
Dogs?
My dogs, no. My neighbor has one, and it just drives the dogs crazy.
Interesting.
Because they see it moving.
Oh, yeah?
And they don't know exactly what it is, and they look at it as something threatening. But again, it's not going to be every dog, and it's not going to be...
Right. So, does it have a timer, or would we have to come turn it on and turn it off?
We're going to put on a timer.
Okay.
I wouldn't have any, you know, because it gets off early, turn it on like at 6:00 and whatever, and turn it off by 8:00.
Right.
Something like that, yeah, that would...
I think that would be...
I'm a bit scared of you.
That would be good.
Like I said, that was my only question about it, was the animals getting frightened.
Right. I'm sure cats would have a heyday with it, though.
Yeah, they would.
We'd jump in on the building or try.
Try to catch it, maybe. Right? Okay?
Sure. So, do we have a preference for... She proposed two...
There's two. One is...
Just in case you want to expand it to Christmas, right?
If one that had like a... you could do different seasonal, like, snowflakes.
Yeah, I think that's the one to get. So, not limited to one.
The one season.
Yeah. That's like a pretty, I think, yeah.
Like I said, I would do them at my house, but it'd probably just drive the animals crazy.
Do they get scared by saunter and stuff like that, too?
They bark for a short period of time until they settle down. If they don't settle down, we put them in cages, and then they cover them, and then they settle right down.
Yeah. Yeah. My cat goes under the kitchen sink, and she just parks there, and she can hear it in the distance, I can't even hear it yet.
And the, the same thing with the shelters. They hear things that I don't even hear.
Yep.
Yeah, some of my son's dogs do, too, and so there's one of them in particular that can send it into seizures, so he gets medication all the time.
Yeah.
Okay, great, Sarah.
Yeah, we'll order it tomorrow.
Good.
Yay.
Sounds like fun, I'll have to even come look at it.
Yes.
Terrific. Okay. And events that we're having. Many of them are pulling out, aren't they?
They, they are. I think it's because of the increased infection rate that's happening, and, but, you know, Savings Bank of Walpole was trying to come up with an idea outside, on the common, a holiday kind of get-together with music and hot cocoa, maybe some snacks, and it's a sleigh ride, but unless it snowed, I don't know how you would do that.
You can have a...
You can have a horse-drawn wagon.
You can have a tractor drawn.
Tractor drawn, with distance between groups.
But how are you gonna distance all the people on it?
They do it at Allison's Orchard, so somebody, you know, I know they do do that there, they, I've seen the tractors, but they have to have family groups, you know, separated.
Do they have a time when they wish to do this?
She has not, she just wanted to make sure it would be approved, we're pretty open. There's, you know, I don't think there's too much happening, maybe a farmer's market at one point on a Saturday, but...
Have they come back to you at all with any more discussion about that?
They have not.
That would be the Saturday before Thanksgiving.
I think that was the target date initially.
Was there original request that you, they come in town hall?
It, it was, and we thought the date was taken, but it was open. But it'd be, you'd have to be, it'd be a lot of work, I mean, for them.
I would prefer that they stay outside.
I, I think it would be better, it's actually safer.
I do, too.
A little less trying to get people, I mean, even with election, you can see how to get people through here, you know, you have one-way traffic, and they'd have to come in one door, go out another, it's a lot of orchestrating.
Now, speaking of that, what day is our handicap access ramp arriving?
It's, it is coming in next week, Brad has checked with Brad Nash, it's all on schedule, no problems, so they should be there next week. The handrails, we're still waiting for them, I mentioned it, and I know they're shipping from Ohio, and they shipped, they're coming freight, so we're still waiting for them.
Okay. Okay, does anyone have any comments about the bank's request?
I would say first come, first served, they left it open, and I'd let them, just let them pick a date. If other people haven't confirmed what they're gonna do, it's not likely they're probably gonna do it. So I would just say, I think it's a great idea, and I would just let them pick the date that works for them.
Okay.
Right, because we've got nothing else scheduled for the common anyway.
Right.
No, we don't.
Yeah, it's pretty...
Open.
Open. And it is outside, which is fairly safe, so...
I was reading something today, some study about how they were saying that playgrounds, because they're outdoors, actually don't pose a great risk, you know, because of the elements, the virus doesn't survive. They were, they found that very interesting in that little, little study I read, that there was really no additional risk, because the outdoor elements, the sun, heat, wind, and all of that, isn't conducive for the virus to live very long. So definitely outdoor events, I think, are a greater safety precaution, if it can be done.
Is there any other new business that needs to come up tonight?
I haven't gotten, it's kind of old, but I haven't received the estimate for the pool yet, so I'm hoping that'll come, maybe for next week.
Good, that would be good. Anything else? Do you, I have a question, that, well, I guess I should probably send it directly to Mike, wow. I've been noticing how many roads have in fact been striped on the sides.
Yeah.
But I drove down Wentworth Road the other day, and it was dark because it was, and there is no striping on that road, and that's a long road.
I just drove, on Wednesday, I drove the whole way.
Yeah, and it, well, you know how, and at night, when a truck was coming toward me with its bright lights on, and it was hauling an empty bed, I thought, well, it looked, of course, gigantic because it was dark, but I thought, you know, it would be nice if I knew exactly where the edge of the road is. And I thought, why has Wentworth Road been permitted?
I'll find out.
Because I've driven down the others, and they, and they make a huge difference.
Absolutely. I think we should stripe as many as we can afford to do.
Well, I thought that we had agreed that we'd do all of them.
Yes, exactly. I can, I can just ask for an update and see what the plan is, so...
I mean, I've gone down Valley Road, I've gone, you know, up March Hill Road, all those things have striked.
Yeah, I told them to stripe them all, even if they was putting them off, Burna Hill Road, things like that, I told them to stripe all that, so I'll ask them about Wentworth Road.
Yes, please include it. And I haven't, I guess the road I haven't been up is a county road, has it been striped?
It's a state road, can it?
It's a state road.
Yeah, I don't think they can do it on a state.
Probably they can't do that, that's too bad, because that's a long winding road that would help a lot.
Yeah, I think we'd have to make a request to the state.
To the DOT for that.
Yes.
But the others that have been done look terrific, and they're much safer, I think. If there is no other business to come before the select board tonight, I will adjourn, and we will reopen the non-public if there are things that you need to discuss in non-public.
I have one item, I said late.
You have one item.
I have one item.
Okay. Steve, you have anything for non-public?
No.
Cheryl, all right, well, I'm afraid we're gonna adjourn.